Okay, just keep me in, keep me in line.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Midwest City Council for, uh, what? They told me to speak in my mic. Welcome to Midwest City Council for February twenty seventh, twenty eighteen, now called this meeting to order. Ask Mike Bauer to come down and lead us in the invocation, and I'll lead us in the pledge. Please stand. Let's pray. Father, we just thank you for the opportunity to come here before you this evening, and just thank you for all these people that serve on the council, on the commissions, on boards, and the good work that they do. Pray that you'll just give them wisdom and discernment, help them always make good decisions that, uh, that are, uh, just will honor you and, uh, and help our city out. Lord, we just, uh, are so thankful to live in a country, uh, that we do, and we're just so thankful to be a part of this city. We ask these things in your name, amen.
Please follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Are there any community-related announcements going around the horseshoe?
Okay, just wanted to remind everyone that, uh, this Thursday morning at the community center at seven thirty, we will hear from the mayor, uh, who will be giving the state of the city address. That's Thursday, seven thirty at the community center, and breakfast will be provided.
And the, uh, I promise we'll keep it under two hours. Well, thank you, uh, we've got a representative from Oklahoma Municipal League, and also would like to, uh, ask Kathy Trainer to come down to the podium, please.
Good evening. I'm Janet Smith, I'm here tonight representing the Oklahoma Municipal League, and I'm here to present an award to Kathy Trainer for twenty-five years of service in neighborhood services for the city of Midwest City, and we'd like to present this to you tonight. Thank you.
I'd like to say it's always been a joy to, uh, to work with Kathy, um, uh, she's, uh, down in our Neighborhood Services Department, which is down in the Charles J. Johnson Building, and, uh, you can always count on a smile and a big hello when you see her, so she always lifts my spirits whenever I see her, so we appreciate you, Kathy.
With that being said, we'll, uh, move into our consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that council members by unanimous, unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any one item proposed does not meet with the approval of council members or members of the audience, wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries, we'll move into discussion portion of our agenda.
First item is discussion consideration of approving a resolution establishing one hundred percent of all fees and taxes for nine-one-one emergency telephone service to be collected by ACOG for the period February twenty-seventh, twenty-eighteen through twenty, through June thirtieth, twenty-eighteen. The attached resolution allows ACOG to collect a hundred percent of the fees and taxes for nine-one-one emergency telephone services. During the nine-one-one board meeting on January twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen, a vote was taken directing ACOG to distribute eighteen cents of the point six-seven to point six-eight-five cents to each public safety answering point, which we have one. Uh, the funds distributor will be retroactive to January one, twenty-seventeen, and once the initial payment is made for the past year, Midwest City will receive reimbursement from ACOG monthly. Staff would recommend approval.
Chair, entertain a motion.
Before, before we make a motion, I think that, uh, we thanked Mr. Bauer upstairs, but I think it's appropriate that we recognize that he played a huge role in this.
I don't think your mic's on.
We thanked him upstairs, but, uh, without going into too much detail, uh, Mr. Bauer and Tim Lyons took a huge, huge risk with this, along with the mayor, and, uh, Midwest City's gonna benefit greatly from this.
And so are twenty-one other cities that are a member of ACOG.
Make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Next item?
This is discussion consideration of approving and entering into the FY twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen services contract with the Midwest City Branch YMCA for services at Reed Baseball Complex and Civic Baseball Complex. The contract will be from March one, twenty-eighteen through February twenty-eighth, twenty-nineteen. Uh, we are, uh, beginning a new chapter, uh, by entering into this agreement with the Midwest City Branch YMCA. Uh, we'll provide for them to be coordinating and providing, uh, our baseball programming in Midwest City that had previously been done by the Midwest City Baseball Association. Uh, you have the agreement in your, uh, in your agenda package, and the park board actually met this evening and reviewed the contract and recommends the contract unanimously to the, to the council.
Move to approve?
Second.
Hold on just a minute, Mr. Hawk, uh, you wanna approach the podium? And, uh, Mr. Hawk is a resident over there, and would like to address the council.
Thank you. Fred Hawk, thirteen oh-two South Caldwell Drive. And, um, I don't think this so much has to do with your agreement, but, uh, I'll just start it off with it, uh, it's been over a year that, uh, during that time, on three occasions, was told we'd have a meeting, uh, to discuss issues with the park. I think how the park has really, uh, overgrown its boundaries or its purpose, uh, because the discussion started out with it, you know, we're gonna hopefully put a bond out sometime, spend a couple million bucks, lighting, et cetera. I did a sampling of, uh, eleven homes, knocked on eleven doors. Eight, the top items was lights, hours of operations, and trash. My, uh, Mr. Henson knows quite well, uh, twenty-eight years, and when we did that, their little agreement, what's going on, how to extend the parks, and when they put the lighting in, when our kids played on that thing, we didn't have any of that kind of lighting. Of course, don't worry about it, Mr. Hawk, the lights won't bother anybody, they're, they're set up on a computer and all this good stuff. Uh, you know, we've lived, uh, the kids playing ball, so that wasn't a big deal, and work, business, and running ninety miles an hour, you get home late, it, that wasn't an issue. Noise wasn't an issue, because we was probably down there or someplace else playing ball. My rub in, in that, my, my issue is the same as the neighbors', and a lot of them said they'd call, it's the, the, and, and now they just mentioned me, says, oh yeah, they, they can run till midnight. I mean, Sunday morning, nine o'clock.
We, we stopped that.
That's a rub.
We, we stopped the nine o'clock, uh, last year, or almost two years ago, Mr. Hawk.
I don't even like it when they tell me, my grandson's gotta, you know, for me, go, you call, we're, we got a nine o'clock game on Sunday morning, I mean, I've gotta rub it back.
Well, hopefully not at Fred Myers Park, because we put a stop to that.
Well, it's just, I just, the principle of it.
Yes, sir.
The issues with, what's going on in the world right now, it's basic family. But if, if, if we stay like you are right now, at, at the very least, we need to address, you don't want it. I, I can, I can live with the noise, and, and the folks down the end of it, bless their hearts, I don't, and that's the ones that really didn't like it. The biggest thing's the lights going through your house, I mean, it's, you know, let me fire up, uh, bring over some construction lights and point them through your windows, I mean, that's what it's like, if you've been, you know, it's, that's the gig, it's just, it's not fun. And we shouldn't have to, a lot of them have put extra blinds on the outside to pull down, or have had them put, you know, some canvas material up and stuff like that, somebody shouldn't have to do that, and that, that's just kinda the rub. And, and everybody said, I just live with it, I just live with it. You know, the lights are on, and, and the issues of that, uh, I, I think, you know, a lot of them said the same thing I did, who do you call? You know, lights, there's nobody there, nobody's home, lights are on. And so, anyway, I just like, I, I think that, with, this contract is, is, uh, also, well, let me, let me step back one right there. I would like, I, I see that the city, in your next item, that the city's gonna take care of the grounds in the, the other two parks. I've walked that park last couple of years, and to me, going around the other facilities, when you're there, that's, should be an ambassador to our city.
We agree.
Yeah. And, uh, Vaughn Sullivan and I called a couple of times, and, and he came over, and they got some things cleaned up and picked up, but it's, I think it ought to be a little cleaner and neater, okay?
Yes, sir. Well, that's why we're, uh, that's why we're taking it back over, Mr. Hawk.
Okay.
That, that end of it, and, uh, and obviously, and I've told you a hundred times, and I'll tell you again, we will continue to work with you to address the issues that, that, uh, that continue to come up with the park, and, uh, uh, we wanna be good neighbors, obviously. Uh, I've got a ballpark right, right behind my house, and you know where it's at, so I, I, I-
I was told to go over there and knock on doors.
I sympathize with your, uh, with your concerns, but we will continue to try to be good neighbors, and actually, we'll go out there and take a look at those lights and make sure they're pointed the right direction, and, and see if we can mitigate some of those issues, um.
It's, this isn't the only place it's going on, I, it's, it's going on Yukon, same scenario.
Yes, sir.
There's other, others, it's, it's, you got a lighting issue, I, I mean, we have the right to, if you will, a, a backyard that's dark, not even more than anything else, if that was a Walmart going in there, if that was a Costco going in there, right, and everything else, would they get away with that? No, him and the Betsy, no. You know, those lights would be the first thing addressed, you got, and that's the first thing that coded best, you know, low silhouette, no, uh, you know, that glare, the over, uh, yeah, encroachment, et cetera, et cetera. It, it's, you know, it's just kind of a basic courtesy thing, and so, and, so you throw all the other factors in there. Uh, I just say that going forward, that, that we ought to look at that, you know, that, we've gotta address those parks. I said, I don't, honestly, I've, I know people live over there and said, well, I can't sleep at night, you know, turn fans on to sleep, get up to go to work, et cetera, et cetera, so I just hope they do a, a good job with it, and then, like I said, if, if it comes a problem, uh, or a lot of them, just tell them to address it, we'll call the parks, and I, if, if there's something gonna happen in, you know, eighteen months, twelve months, to address those lights, but I don't wanna see, uh, I know, you talk about gonna put up LED, couple million dollars worth of improvements, et cetera, uh, I just think I'll be looked a little farther out.
Yes, sir. Fred, uh, your, your complaints have already been addressed with the why.
Well, they, well-
They, but they're, they haven't started, they won't start till Friday, but they know what the issues are, the other stuff besides the lighting.
Yeah.
They're aware of the trash, they're aware of the late hours, they're aware of, they're aware of the restroom issues that you've mentioned.
Okay, that's another one to be nice to-
It's already, it's already been, she's already, we talked to her about that.
Put that back down there.
Representative from the parks is here, they're aware of it. The only thing I ask you is that, we, we did make a change, there were some reasons change was made, we just need to give the why an opportunity to see if they're a right fit, and I think that, I think it will, I think it will improve. 'Cause I hear it, and I've lived farther away from you than the park, so I know, I know, I know what the noise is.
Well, it, this isn't the, I don't think this is the time, place to discuss it, I just briefly, with the mayor though, but, about the tournaments, the leagues, the, the, uh, number of our children playing in the games, the number of leagues, how many's outside of it, it, it's, it's a long, long list, and I think that it, it's evolved because schools getting out of the activity, cities have become part of that. Kids don't have a place right now, I can say to him, you know, like we used to say, get on your bikes and go up to school and play. Well, they can stand there, because they're locked up, and they can just stand there and look in, they can't go down there and play. Soccer field's open, but I mean, far as playing ball and stuff, they can't ride their bikes down to any of the schools now, the school's locked up, et cetera, you know. It's heck where we're at, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hawk. With that being said, Chair, entertain a motion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, next item?
This is discussion consideration of supplementing the street department budget for FY seventeen eight and eighteen by adding a full-time groundskeeper position for the purpose of maintaining Reed Civic and Doug Hunt Sports Complexes. This, uh, item goes, uh, goes, uh, along with the, uh, change in the, uh, responsibility for the baseball programming in the city, uh, in that this is, uh, the why is taking this on, um, without much experience in, in how things will operate here in Midwest City. They requested our assistance in helping to ma- maintain the facilities, and so this will, this, uh, supplement will, uh, allow the Public Works Director to hire an additional person that will be responsible for maintaining those fields. And, um, if anyone, uh, questions our, uh, uh, our ability to maintain our facilities and, and how Mr. Sullivan, how seriously Mr. Sullivan takes, takes, um, mowing his grass, he, um, he's pretty serious about it, so Fred, I think you know you'll get, you'll see a much better product out there this year than, than in years past.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries, next item?
This is PC nineteen thirty-two, public hearing with discussion consideration of approval of the proposed final plat of Turtlewood Sixth Edition for the property described as a part of the southeast quarter of Section Seven, Township Eleven North, Range One West. Mr. Harless?
Yes, this is the final plat for Turtlewood Sixth Edition. Uh, for those of you who are familiar with Turtlewood, uh, that's, the preliminary plat was, uh, in discussion over several council meetings ago, the, the past few months around the start of the year. Um, this sixth edition was, uh, in the queue, uh, for, at the planning commission, being heard at that time. And since they went ahead and, uh, recommended approval of this, um, we have, uh, tied the staff report to those conditions of the preliminary plat, um, with the drainage being expanded, with the, uh, outfalls of the, uh, the, the, uh, detention facility, um, per the discussion at those council meetings. Um, we did receive those improvement plans, um, today, uh, from what I understand, and, and, and I think that they, at a glance, meet those requirements, um, in order for, uh, the, the planning commission and council, uh, planning commission and staff do recommend approval of this, uh, but they would not be allowed to build any structures on this until the improvement plans, uh, and the improvements are complete out, uh, in the field. So at that time, we will see that the, uh, detention facility and the drainage improvements are made, uh, per previous council meetings. I will be out, uh, glad to answer any questions, uh, should you have any.
Any questions from the council? We do have two gentlemen signed up to, uh, come down and speak to the council on this issue. Mr. Earl, would you, uh, come down to the podium? You'll, you'll defer to, defer to Bo? Bo Peeler?
Hello, I'm Bo Peeler, twenty-three oh-two South Webster Drive.
Speaking of baseball.
Yeah, I was getting ready to say a guy, I would much rather be talking about baseball up here. Uh, got my cap on and, and, uh, it's part of my attire nowadays, as you probably would assume.
You got some grandsons playing?
Yes, I do.
Alright.
I'm gonna pass this out, um, and it's not as bad as it looks, I promise I'm gonna go fast. Little water drops and what have you. Um, what I wanna do quickly, and again, thank y'all for listening to me, and I, and I hope this is the, really the last time that I really have to address you guys related to the, this concerns, but I wanted to cover some historical things that I've been talking about for quite some time, and I'm not sure the message or the, you know, the viewpoints got across as well as I wanted to, and I wanted to clarify some things from the last council meeting that we had, and then show a few pictures of, uh, the rainfall events and icing that we just had over the last weekend. So, I'll go quickly, if you'll look at the first picture, and what I have is the pictures from, uh, from Google Earth Pro, where you can go through there and do some, uh, historical views over time. Nothing fancy, I think everyone has access to this. Um, but assume, for everything I say, when you, when I talk about a water problem or a drainage problem, or point to an area, that if I'm having a problem on my property, then so is Dale, and so is John, because it all flows downhill to them, so I'm not gonna dwell or address their issue or mention them as much, but what I wanna show you here in this first one is the land from an aerial view prior to any development or clearing activities took place, and you can see how dense the brush was, and, and, uh, the trees and, and what have you. And I've circled in yellow an area there that I focus on when I talk to you guys in the past and the, and now. And as we go through this, I'd like for you to at least focus on that area, and what you see there is green grass, um, or green pasture land, and two empty ponds. And I would tell you that those two, two ponds on the right and on the left, um, are depicted in the U.S. Geological Survey that Chris and company have talked about several times related to the water drainage. Um, so from that pond across my property to the other pond, and then ultimately into Frolik, and then Soldier Creek was, is the drainage, uh, flow for this. Um, looking at the next page, uh, this was in May of oh-five, you can see the ponds are dry, everything's green and dry. Um, the, the, the purpose in this is, I, I just want you to see that, over time, and, and I'm only able to show you what Google Earth has online in the history, so, um, this is basically how it is. Dale Sledge's properties to the bottom left, that's been affected through this. Uh, John Earl's in that middle pond strip there, and then my shop, the top of my shop is showing there in that, uh, picture above the yellow circle. So, turning the page again, a couple of months later, east pond's had water, has water in it, the west pond has a little bit, still dense cover, of course, and greenery, but you don't see any water standing on my property. Um, and again, you know, it just shows that it's rained and it's not standing there. Um, in the next picture, the land has been scraped, this is February of oh-seven. I fail to remember exactly, uh, when they did both of these, but it's been scraped here. Um, the water is in the east pond, uh, on the Home Creations property, and you can see where they've kind of flattened out some berms there when they did the dozer work, the, the, uh, dam stuff around that pond. Also, I drew a yellow line through it, but if you look in the bottom right of that oval circle, you'll see, uh, some dirt areas, and that is actually culverts, uh, or caverns that you could actually jump off in, so that's really deep, and, and that always held a lot of water and what, what have you there, too. Um, on the next page, and is probably the most compelling photo I could find on Google Earth that would make the point for me, that I never had standing ponding water after rains and significant events, um, even in the past. Um, and as you can see, and when you look at this, that, um, the, the trees and the brush has started to grow back on the eastern property. Uh, you can see both ponds are exceeding their banks, and you can still look at that circled area and see that I don't have standing water. So, um, this is probably one of the better ones of them all. Uh, on the next page, the ponds are dry, May of fourteen, and you can kind of tell that, uh, there's a few little lines starting to show up in my property, and it's so far up in there, you can't really tell. Um, but I did have erosion starting to take place from the water runoff. place from the water runoff and what have you. Um, in the next March of fifteenth photo, March of fifteen photo, uh, same thing, no standing water, green pasture land, uh, but on the ground, if you were to walk it, you could see, or start to see the erosion taking place. Um, the next page is, uh, September of sixteen, I believe. There's no photos between the last one I showed you and this one that shows, um, the dirt area, but what you're seeing there in the yellow, uh, V shape, upside down V, whatever you want to call that, is where Home Creations came in and, and added the dirt, uh, and sawed to repair my property from the, the erosion. And we had talked about that last time, and I'd mentioned that they had done that. If you look at Dale Sledge's in the bottom left, you can start to see the discoloring of the ground and, and the dirt showing up there. Also, uh, it's hard to s- tell on John's area, but to the right of that pond, you can see some discoloration and stuff forming there, and that's where that water always was back up and then start going to, uh, Dale's house. The next page, uh, June of twenty seventeen, uh, that's the most current photo, and you can see now that the detention pond that we've been talking about for quite some time is installed. Um, the east pond is, is covered up with the dirt, there's, it's not there any longer, and, uh, the west pond has some water. And, uh, again, I don't have any standing water or pooling water at this time in this photo, but you can start to see little brown lines running through there, and to this day, it's starting to get a little bit deeper and you could, it's just from the water flow coming through there. Um, and then the next page, um, it's just a picture, I think you all have seen maybe this one, I, I just randomly grabbed one that had water in it. Um, but this is looking east towards the Home Creation, uh, property, and, uh, that was before the repairs were made to my property. The next page is, is looking from, uh, the Home Creations property across mine after the repairs were done, and you can see the rock block in there that's supposed to control erosion, and, um, about twenty or thirty feet worth, and then the rest was sod and grass, but it still shows the significant water flow and current that goes through there. Um, the next section, I just want to clarify some things, and you all probably already know this, and I didn't quite grasp it or, or figure it out until, to the extent I did, until after the last council meeting and I had left. Um, but Guy, I think you were one of the ones that noticed and asked some questions about the flume that I have circled in red at the bottom, and your, your concerns were that as that drainage goes into the pond, the drain on the other side of it was pretty much even with it, and so it wouldn't give the pond a chance to detain water. And if I read you correctly, that was your question or your issue. But the, the better question, in my mind now, after having a few days to think about it, was, well, where did that come from? Um, that was not briefed or, or discussed. What was discussed was that we were gonna extend this detention pond to the south, and that, based on all the calculations, we still couldn't, uh, disable or take out the drain that aims at my property because there's still water flow. Well, yeah, I understand why there's still water flow now, because they've added seventy-one new houses to this drainage pond, the, the rest of the addition to the south. So, that's what that flume is. And so, what I wanted you to do, and I'm not really here to throw anyone under the bus, other than to make sure that you all understood what you heard last time, because I certainly didn't. What I heard was, they gave up four lots, they're extending the pond, and they're doing what Mr. Peeler suggested. And while I suggested that, I've been clear that that's the lesser of the two evils. And that is still my suggestion, was to go to the south of my property, but it's not a shell game. So, to be clear, um, if you turn the page, the diagram on the left is what was given out at the, that particular meeting. And, um, and then the one on the right's the one for tonight. And I just want you all to understand that that red circle I've got there on the right is the seventy-one homes that's gonna be going into this same drainage. And that, um, will then all go to the south down the railroad tracks, unless there's a new plan that I haven't seen. So this is kind of something that I wanted to point out to you all, make sure you understood, based on what you heard in January. If you turn the page, when you zoom out, um, I've kind of depicted, in my view, um, the blue circle there, of course, is the pond that's gone now. The red lines is basically the drainage area that used to come to that pond, I guess, onto my property, even though it didn't pull or run. And, um, now what we have is the yellow, uh, that I've circled there, that they've taken all that dirt, moved it up the hill, it all goes to this little pond, and it's pretty obvious, when you look at that yellow line and circle, that that's a little old tiny pond, uh, that's supposed to handle all that. So I'm thankful they're gonna extend it or, or make it bigger. When you look at some of these other additions, Stone Gay, I think's one of them, several of them have huge, huge ponds, and they're nice. Uh, and they look like they can hold a lot more water than this tiny, tiny one would. So, moving on, recent rainfall, uh, from last weekend, I just took some pictures and put them on here. The first page you see was February twentieth. Um, we had some rain, not much, when I took these photos. My idea was, I thought, uh, the forecast was we were gonna get rain, so I want to get some befores and afters. And so, the dates are on these pictures, if you can read them very well, but I just took, tried to match the after pictures with these first few that I took before the rain started. So, when you look at the next page, it's February twenty-second, the ice storm, um, and rain, and then you can see in the bottom left, the drainage flume. And, you know, that's a lot of water coming in there. Um, if you look at the top left, that pond is really, really low, and it's because they drained it to dredge it out and remove the silt that had gone in. And so, it was really, really low. If you look at the lineup on the, you can kind of tell the water line there, because they had some sod that, that goes to the water line. Um, and again, I'll stress that this is still just a quarter of the housing and streets that are gonna go in here. Um, and I'm, and this thing filled up in, uh, well, let's see, that's the twenty-third, so the next picture to the right is the twenty-four, so, um, it, no, the twenty-second. So it filled up, uh, really quickly once it started raining. That, the one on the bottom right is when it's full and draining onto my property. Um, so the next page was tw- the twenty-third, and as you all know, if you were here, we were getting rain, and it stopped, rain, drizzle, rain, rain. And these are the puddles that were forming on my property without Home Creations' help. So I'm not sitting here telling you that I don't get rain on my property like anyone else does in their front yard or their backyard. Uh, but that's what it looks like. And then when you turn the page, you'll see on the twenty-fourth Saturday morning, after that rain that woke us all up Saturday morning, um, there's the different, uh, angles and pictures of, uh, what occurred there, once the pond started draining onto me, down the middle. And the last page of pictures, there's just two, again, they're, they're aiming, uh, these are taken to the west. If you look at the top left one, that's Dale Sledge's home over there in the top there at the back, and the one on the right is, uh, taking of the water up towards John Earl's house. So to summarize quickly, um, you know, I, I, this, I mean, you guys can read for yourself, I, I think that, um, building that pond to the south, the way I understand it's currently planned, is the, again, the best option out of the two evils, I'll call them. Um, it's still gonna drain thirty acres of water down that one, uh, path. I still want my, that drain that's aimed at me shut off and left off. Uh, I realize that as, uh, this goes, we'll all learn and find out where this water's gonna ultimately end up. Um, there are, as you know, culverts in Frolic that handle water, that drains it on through the system to, uh, Soldier Creek, and I hope we can put something back there, riprap, cement culvert, something that will orderly take that water, protect the erosion on our properties, and take that water into the drainage system. And that's all I have. If someone else has any questions or anything, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, Mr. Peeler, I understand you're, you're talking about this, I'm gonna call it the southern solution, um, a- as the better option, and then the idea that you want to see an addition of a cement culvert or riprap or equivalent material to prevent the erosion to private property, particularly starting with yours and your neighbors. So, is that proposal included, um, Billy, with regard to what we saw upstairs in pre-council, to add that in, or is that just part of where the diversion is going from it adding to the detention pond to the south and then, uh, detouring the water to the southern edge?
No, what, uh, the proposal you saw upstairs, uh, the way I understand it, does not include doing, uh, a culvert or a flume down the southern part of the, of all those properties along the railroad bed, uh, railroad, um, corridor. So it does not, it's, uh, it's just to take the water to the south and then, uh, to the west.
But there is an existing flume there, you said, correct?
It is. I don't even know how many, a thousand feet?
Or Patrick, sorry.
No, it's fine, yes ma'am, there is, there is an existing, uh, concrete flume there, but it is to the west. It does not extend all the way to the outlet of this detention pond.
Yeah, where this green line is on the drawing.
Yeah, it's a thousand to fifteen hundred foot of, uh, natural drainage basin.
Yeah, that green line.
Between the two improvements.
Councilman, if, council?
That green line on this, this page here, the solid one, is the bed of the railroad tracks on the north side of the railroad track, and it goes down a hill there, because the railroad track's elevated. And at the end of that green line to the west or the left, if you look right above that, you can see the cement culvert start that goes up underneath Alicia Drive into that other culvert, that then goes through the Frolic addition. Um, the, these houses, there's one, two, three, five houses there, um, that, you know, what we were briefed, um, in the last council meeting, that this flattens out over here, and that's the reason they couldn't take the drainage ditch off of my property. Um, but I'm, I'm thinking that, that they may get some water there, but it was more around the fact that they're adding a lot more water to this pond than originally planned.
Any further discussion or questions? Bo, thank you for being here and the, the information. Uh, we were presented with a, uh, a plat upstairs that kind of addressed most of the issues that we've talked about. Uh, we, uh, are pretty much in agreement that we need to monitor this situation, and if there's further improvements, we may need to come back into or, or do later on, once this thing settles down, then obviously, we're gonna have to be open to that. And, uh, and, uh, and have a open line of communication between us and, uh, and everyone else. So, I do promise you that, and, uh...
Well, and I appreciate everyone's ear and listening to me. Um, you know, it's just, uh, you know, three people or so, or however many on those other houses that are affected by this, in a city that has a large population, but it means a lot to us when we worked hard for our properties.
Yes, sir.
Bo, is it, uh, one of the things that was discussed upstairs was the possibility of, of you all conveying some, some drainage easements to the city, um, maybe now or in the future to accommodate the, uh, the improvements that, that may or may not be necessary? Is that, is that something that you all are willing to entertain?
I can't speak with a hundred percent certainty for my neighbors, although we have talked about it favorably. I would have to let them speak for themselves. My wife and I have had a lengthy conversation, and she tells me she wants to do it just so I won't have a heart attack. Um, so, you know, it, it is something that I definitely would strongly consider, um, and I, because long-term water destroys, and it take, it, it will do it. Um, it's not a question of, uh, whether it will or not, it's just how long and patient I'll be to watch it wash away. And I think the Frolic neighbors are gonna get in here next, um, as this occurs. Um, granted, that, you know, it's all done properly. But, uh, yes, we've, we've considered that strongly. I have also reached out to the, uh, you know, Parkwood Mobile Home Park on Twenty-Ninth Street. The owner of that has the land that goes and, but it's my property. And I have reached out to them in terms of their willingness to split easement or do something along those lines, and their response was that they would, uh, wait and watch. But it is something we did-
Are they still out of California? Is the ownership still in California?
Denver.
Denver, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Once again, Bo, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you all, thank you.
With all that being said, is any further discussion? Chair would entertain a motion?
Wait, I think, I think this gentleman is moving.
All right, John.
Hello, council. My name's John Earl, twenty-three oh five, South Webster Drive. You know, I know I've been really getting on to you guys, but this is personal. Like all of you know, you're homeowners, you're landowners. And when you have somebody that was, uh, east of us, that was a private landowner first, then a construction property now, and, you know, first of all, I came to the council, the building permits and stuff, back in July of twenty thirteen. And I was asking all the questions that I needed to get a house built, what I, what I needed to do to get this land going. And I haven't even bought it yet. There was people in the room, in the conference room, Billy was there, you know, and about, and you was there, or your assistant, and I laid out everything what I wanted. I wanted to build a house, a private house. And I showed all the plans and whatever I needed. Billy came up while he was sitting down, and he asked me a question, and I still remember it to this day. Will you give us an easement across your property? What are you gonna do with that pond? That's your exact words. I didn't understand what he was meaning about that, but now I do. That's why I'm taking it personally.
I don't recall, I don't recall that conversation happening, so I'm not going to-
Uh, yeah, well, I did happen, but I was there.
Not typical of the conversations I get into at a building permit.
Because we had everybody in there.
John, for the, for the sake of time, could you go ahead and move forward with your point?
Well, first of all, I didn't understand what Billy was, what I, and I wrote some notes, and I still have it on a little pad at the house that I'm trying to find. And an easement, I said, I don't even own the property yet. Why, why should I give you an easement to the city? So, first of, are you gonna fill in the pond? And I said, no, because as of May twenty thirteen on the map, you see a nice blue pond. Nice. And I fell in love with that pond. Then in June twenty seventeen, you can see how muddy that water is. And now I'm finding, uh, kind of glass cleaners now, that you go into a home, a new home, and clean all the glass and everything. I'm finding that on my property now. And when it was- And when it was raining stuff, before it was raining, I couldn't even walk back there because it was like mush. I couldn't even use my back of my property. The fence line between Beau and me is leaning over because it's so wet. On his side, where Home Creations did make the, you know, the grass and everything, it's hard as a rock. I couldn't even stick a stick down in there. On my property, it went down almost two and a half feet. So that's personal. And so, I just wanna ask the council that after Home Creation builds out everything, who's gonna take care of that pond? Does anybody know? You just authorized a person to take care of these baseball parks. Why don't you hire somebody to take care of?
It is, sir. It's an HOA. The Homeowners Association will take care of that pond.
Is that in writing?
Yeah.
Where is it? Can I have a copy? Can I have a copy?
You guys are the builders, right? And when HOA, when you release ownership to the HOA, they're responsible for the pond, correct? Is that in writing in the HOA that you can give to this gentleman?
Discuss it. We don't get anything. And so, we come to a point where when they get out of there, we're gonna have a mess. And I'm taking it personal again. It's gonna be on Beau's, my property and Dell's property. And the drainage issue that guy brought up, you know, easement, drainage, you know, culvert, that was discussed in June or July of twenty thirteen to me by Billy. So why are we bringing it up now? Thank you.
Thank you, John. John, I'm gonna ask you a question, same that we asked Beau. If in fact we have to move in and do some drainage improvements through the back of your property, are you gonna be willing to give us an easement?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Because I didn't even own the property. And I wish Billy would've said, well, see, there's a development coming in, and we need an easement.
Well, I don't think we had that on our radar back then, John, so. Thank you for being here. I appreciate it.
Okay. I would like to hear from our folks from Home Creations now, because I have some questions.
Not with Home Creations, I'm with SMC Consulting Engineers. Do you need an engineer or do you need a home builder?
A home builder.
My name is Mo Sharifi. I'm with the Home Creations at two-two-five-two North Broadway, Moore, Oklahoma.
Good evening.
Hi.
In follow-up to this gentleman's question, so you don't have a homeowners association established for the neighbors yet? And does the homeowners association have bylaws associated with it?
It does.
And do the bylaws provide for any type of drainage to be the responsibility or maintenance of drainage ponds to be the responsibility?
I can tell you for the.
If you'll, in fairness, let me finish my question, I'll appreciate it, okay? Again, do the bylaws provide for the homeowners association to be responsible for maintaining any drainage on that property? Drainage ponds, drainage, anything associated with drainage? Do you know?
That piece of property that we are developing now is under Home Creations. We haven't transferred that to HOA. But I can tell you for the other piece of property, for Section Two and Section One, which is under HOA responsibilities.
Okay, so is it?
So, it's under homeowners association?
Homeowner association.
Is the drainage under that?
I haven't read that. I have no clue about it. But I'm pretty, because we had a big pond in Section Two, and I'm pretty sure that has been transferred to the, to HOA, and HOA responsible for all the drainage issue on that. I know for a fact about that one.
Can we put a kicker in this?
If we approve this, can we put a kicker in it that the HOA will have to be responsible for this, and you'll have to put this in the HOA?
I think you wanna be careful, the timeline when you turn it over to the HOA. But there needs to be something in it where he's responsible until a certain percentage, and then that the HOA is responsible for, is how it usually works.
To satisfy some of the questions I think some of us have, though, is there a way that we could put some verbiage in this that would alleviate some of their concerns?
Well, I don't know, this is a question for Phil. I don't know that you can put it on a non-existent HOA with regard to this section and the portion that's yet to be developed, but you can put it on the landowner.
Hasn't been, hasn't been established yet, I guess, so until he gets it, we can't address it with the bylaws.
No, but we can address it to the landowner right now.
Yes.
That, and ultimately, if they then wanna make a deal with the HOA and transfer it to make it the HOA's responsibility, that's the way it'll end up.
Phil, could we make that in the motion?
Well, you can make it in the motion for engineering when they look at the bylaws and they look at the ordinances, that they take that into consideration, yes.
Well, I'm, let me drive that a little further, Phil. My question is, the concern that, I'm sorry, I can't remember your last name, sir. John?
Burns.
Sorry, I can't, what's his last name? I'm sorry.
Earl.
Earl. Mr. Earl had, was with regard to the maintenance of the drainage pond, once it's constructed. So, my ask is this. What I don't wanna see happen is, we've got a plan that's been discussed. It seems that Billy and Patrick are comfortable with the plan, but ultimately, nobody's got a crystal ball at this table, and nobody knows the outcome. And there is certainly a concern about maintaining the pond to ensure it isn't filling up with silt and residue and et cetera, so that it holds a lower capacity of water. So, my ask is directly, Phil, if we can't say that our approval of this has, in Sean's words, a kicker associated with it, that requires the landowner to ensure that they are maintaining those drainage ponds and scooping them out regularly to ensure that they go to the appropriate depth, something along those lines? Because what I don't wanna see happen, and I think what nobody at this horse she wants to see happen, is that ultimately, it comes back to be the city's problem to clean up if, heaven forbid, the proposal doesn't work, and if, heaven forbid, I'm sorry, Beau and John, sorry, I'll just be informal, end up with continued drainage issues on their properties.
Yeah, and I think the city can require them to maintain that pond, and when they turn it over to the homeowners association.
The problem is not while they're under development, because it is their responsibility currently. When we get into trouble, it's when it is transferred over to the HOA, and there's nothing in the covenants or bylaws that provide for that, so.
If you make it the owner's responsible, and then when the owner's responsible, here the new owner is, which is the HOA, that ownership responsibility would transfer.
But it has to be spelled out in the covenants and bylaws of the HOA to provide for that.
If not, though, doesn't it stay the responsibility of the landowner?
If they leave it out of the HOA, but we put it out of the owner's responsible for it, and any subsequent owners are responsible for it, once it passes over to the HOA, even if that verbiage isn't in there, the HOA by default would still be responsible for taking care of it, because they would be the landowners, right?
That's my question.
If they accept responsibility of that pond from the construction and the developer, yes.
We're saying, it's kinda like, you can put covenants, you can put restrictions on a deed.
They can't hear you.
I'm sorry. You can put restrictions on a deed that carry over from owner to owner to owner. I'm asking is if we could put something on here that carries from owner, and the new HOA would be the new owner?
I believe you could, because we have to approve the HOA bylaws. And we look at them also being in compliance with the ordinances. And so, if we have a developer who's turning a pond over, then yeah, when we review the bylaws, we at that time make sure that it's covered. If it's not, we don't approve the bylaws.
These are developed under the old bylaw, or the old subdivision regulations, and the previous city attorney would not let us look at those HOA agreements because we could not regulate them. But under the new regulations, we do, and these are developed under the old regulations.
See, you've been sending a bunch of them to me, so I know.
Well, that's a plus of the new subdivision regulations. We insisted that we look at those for these type of things.
Right.
So, really, we'd like to make this go away, but how about if we take no action and give you guys the opportunity to figure this out?
The ones I've been looking at and approving has been with the engineering and also making sure that they meet the ordinance requirements, so that has, they won't be approved unless they do.
But if it's under the old subdivision rules, we can't look at it, is what Billy's trying to say, right?
That has not been the practice previously.
Well, however, if approval is needed to continue with the development, I would expect that some amicable resolution with regard to the maintenance of the detention ponds could be addressed.
And each lot will have an attachment of the HOA to it when they go to sell the lot. It's part of the agreement, it's restrictive covenants on it.
But if the HOA doesn't address the.
If they let that out.
If the bylaws don't address the obligation, right, exactly.
If they drop the ball, they don't put anything about maintaining this, and we can't look at the new HOA because it's under the old subdivision. I wanna make sure this isn't getting dropped for.
You said that, you said under the old subdivision regulations, but under the new ones, they have to come through, isn't? We do have eyes on, correct?
Yes, sir.
That is clerk correct?
Yes.
Sir, so it would behoove to you that when you send up the rules, regulations, and bylaws of this new HOA, and has some maintenance issues addressed with this drainage on the backside of this lot?
I must be misunderstanding something. I heard Billy say that this is under the old subdivision laws, which means he doesn't have to provide an HOA. So, we don't look at it. Billy?
And we, under the old ones, we do not look at them per the previous city attorney's advisement.
So with this particular project, we keep them on?
At this particular time, I think since this is an issue, that we go ahead and require them to provide those to us and make it part of the development.
And I have been reviewing them, and I do believe we need to keep, consider that and require them in the homeowners association files.
So, Mr. Attorney, so if we make a motion requiring that he has those provisions in the bylaw, in the covenants and bylaws before he submits them, then we will be okay, and the HOA will be responsible for their drainage maintenance?
Yeah, either way, either the developer's gonna be responsible or they can put it in the bylaws where the homeowners association can take responsibility.
Either way, this is gonna be protected, correct?
If you got a motion to pass, will you?
Can I have some comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, but as I said, I haven't seen that bylaw because it's handled by our attorneys.
We understand.
And, but based on my.
But you're gonna be the messenger that needs to take that message back, correct?
Back to them, yes, sir. But the thing is here, I know for a fact that for Phase One, Two, and Three, right now, HOA is responsible for all those detention ponds and drainage issue. That's something that I know for a fact.
Okay. Thank you so much. With that being said, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Chair would entertain a motion. The chair would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to pass, approve this, under the condition that the homeowners association rules and regulations that carry responsibility for the upkeep of the ponds, both during construction and once construction is completed and turned over to individuals that own that property, I'd make a motion to pass it under those conditions. Whatever.
Can I make an addendum that the property owner's responsible up until the time it's turned over to the HOA?
Is that acceptable?
Well, I wanna make sure that at what point, you don't want him turning it over to the HOA to, you know, until basically all those lots are developed. So I wanna make sure that he's not gonna be able to, and he don't want to, to pass the responsibility to the homeowners until after those lots are developed.
And typically, they go to like seventy-five percent sold, to lots are seventy-five percent sold or occupied, or eighty-five percent of the development is built out, and then it passes over to the HOA because we start getting complaints about that time.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, is our motion adequate to cover what we're wanting to do?
With the percentage of eighty-five percent sold and occupied?
City clerk, you got it, Liz?
It really depends, because with the size of this project, right now, we are planning to go ahead and hand over the responsibility to HOA as of next few years, because I have too many homes right now. But, yeah, but that piece of property that we are going to develop, it's not going under HOA until we get to sixty to seventy percent.
I withdraw my motion. Now, five minutes ago, he didn't have any of that information available to him. He didn't know about the, he didn't know about the homeowners association. He led me to believe, I thought, that he really didn't know or couldn't speak to the homeowners. But now, all of a sudden, he can. So, I'm wondering, did I, I must have slept through part of that because what I heard was, I don't really know anything about that, and now he does. So, it just concerns me, so I'm not comfortable.
Can I make comments? The reason I'm telling you, this is not, this is just based on my conversation with it. This is not based on the attorney's comments, because it really depends on each subdivision and how much money each section is collecting, and if it's ready to be moved on to the HOA.
I move that we take no action on this item. And I suggest that your attorneys speak with Mr. Anderson, our attorney, and work out some language that everybody can live with with regard to how these ponds are gonna be maintained during construction and post-construction, and then we can bring this item up again at the next council meeting.
Is that your motion, Ms. Eads? I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Continue.
I'll rephrase that. I move to continue this item with the caveat that I just advised, where counsel for Home Creations can speak with Mr. Anderson, and they can come up with some agreeable language as to how the ponds are going to be maintained during construction and post-construction.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Thank you, sir, and we'll see you next week.
All right, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Are you'll continue that discussion, Burns? We had this very discussion when you were running for council on this type of thing. Mr. Henson, this is a repeated, you know, who's been here longer, and you know, forty, my years around and what's going on in these things, I'm speaking for my children and grandchildren now, as a taxpayer issue on this thing. Because you brought it up, Mayor, what, can we get easements? And so, here the city's on the hook, are we not, guy? This is what happened with these sonny's projects. We gotta look back to the engineers.
Not to be rude, not to be rude. We've already voted on this issue. But the reason this discussion went so long is because we are trying to protect your grandchildren, my grandchildren. And thank you.
But it's gonna be open for discussion, all right?
Correct. Well, and we have taken action on what you're talking about.
But we want some engineers and stuff to be some counsel.
Two weeks from now, this will be open for fellow. Two weeks from now, this should be open for public discussion, correct?
Yes.
With that being said, let's move on to the next discussion item.
This is PC nineteen thirty-seven, public hearing with discussion consideration of approval of a resolution for a special use permit to allow the use of drinking establishments, sit-down alcoholic beverages, and low-point beer permitted in the C-three Community Commercial District for the property described as a part of the northwest quarter of Section Three, Township eleven north, Range Two west, located at two thirty-two South Air Depot Boulevard. Mr. Harless?
Yes, sir. This is just a special use permit for two thirty-two South Air Depot, for them to sell alcohol, alcoholic beverages in, sorry, vision's getting a little... In space D. I think it's important to note that if they were to expand or go outside of space D, that the special use permit would then have to be reheard or become invalid at that point, so you'd have another chance to visit the situation. Planning commission and staff recommend approval.
Is this a bar? I mean, what is it? Oh, are you the owner?
Yes.
Well, thank you. Come to the podium and say your name and, and address, please.
Lubrica Schaefer. I live at twenty-one thirty-fourth Smithwick, and...
Hello, I'm Ryan Relich, and I live at seven seventeen Northeast Twenty-third, Moore, Oklahoma.
Thank you for being here. Okay, just exactly, we, I'm going to be just straight up honest with you. We got a complaint last summer of a booth sitting out in front of this particular business selling margaritas or, or possible alcoholic beverages, and as we investigated it, it turned out to be non-alcoholic daiquiris that you could pull up and, and get in your car. Are you connected in any way, shape, or form with that group?
No, we're not.
Well, that makes me feel better.
No, we're, we're, no, no way, shape, or form connected with that group, actually. What we're wanting to open is, we're opening the first, one of the first, well, actually, the first daiquiri lounge in Oklahoma City as a whole. And of course, as you guys know, Oklahoma has dedicated itself to becoming with the trends, so to speak. Them, along with the ABLE Commission, have put in many laws that actually will create more revenue for alcoholic beverages, in actually starting this year, because of course, you know, we are at the Bible state. So we're, Oklahoma is putting in a lot of laws. And my partner and I, we actually saw this location. It is in the Section D. It's about, which is about sixteen hundred square foot, square feet, and it is a perfect location that actually will drive, drive people to the location, as well as keep it very, it's actually very family-oriented daiquiri lounge. So it's a place for good times. It's actually called a good time daiquiri lounge. So good times, family fun, just holistic fun.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that explanation. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Any further discussion or questions?
I just want to ask, where did this kind, this trend concept come from? Is it from another state, or?
Yes, so thank you for asking that. So I'm not sure if you guys know, but actually, a lot of Oklahomans are actually driving down to Dallas to go to their daiquiri lounge. Now, mind you, of course, you know, we know Dallas is three hours away, so there's actually money that's going out of the state into another state. But daiquiri lounges did start in the south. Originally, it did start in Florida, and it's kind of migrated, and it is now a trend that originally started in the early nineteenth. I actually want to say the, the first one was started in like nineteen thirty-seven, and it's actually just been kind of going on. And just since then, more and more states have kind of picked up on it, because not a lot of people have it, because it's, you know, you got a bar and you got a restaurant. You don't necessarily have a daiquiri lounge. So it's, it's a good middle ground. It's not, you know, full-on bar, and it's not, you know, full-on restaurant. It's that, just that middle ground where everybody gets to have fun, whether you're twenty-one or, you know, a hundred and twenty-one. Everybody gets to have fun and enjoy.
Thank you for that explanation. Any further questions? Chair would entertain a motion. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, indicating saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Next item is PC nineteen thirty-eight, public hearing with discussion consideration of approval of the Saint Charles Place Final Plaid for the property described as attractive land lying in the southwest quarter of Section Thirty-six, Township Twelve North, Range Two West of the Indian Meridian, City of Midwest City, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma. Mr. Harless?
Yes, this is a seven-and-a-half acre development, thirty-seven single-family homes. This is developed under the new subdivision regulations, final plaid. The typically, under our new subdivision regulations, the improvements are all installed, roads, water, sewer, all those things, before the final plaid is issued, unless there's a bond secured for this, for those improvements. In this case, I think there, the majority of the improvements are in, but they went ahead and secured a bond so that they could start getting building permits. Planning commission and staff recommend approval.
Any questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone have anything for this particular item? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion. Oh, hello, Fred.
We're going to, we're going to charge you extra here.
I want to go unnoticed, and I call them about the ballpark. I'm sorry.
Fred Hawk, thirteen oh two South Caldwell Drive. It just happened to be, I, this is the property immediately to the north of Reno, right? The back, back part we developed. I've looked at that twice. I did it by the rain. It's because of the issues that we've talked about. It's issues that's happened over at his place. It's issues that's happened for forty, fifty years. It goes on, it goes on. It's kind of like, when are we not going to have? My question is, is, I'm going to assume, and I know who previously owned it, they sold off the back half and kept the front part for, for commercial property, right?
Right.
Now then, that drainage on that piece of, that pond on that, you just, you just kind of look at, and you're going, why do we have the drainage all the way over to the west, and it's not going south? Because the next person, they sell that off or lease it off or do something. Now here, we got to address that water, unless it's in there, that how that water from that detention pond out of that, when it rained, that, we haven't had it rain, folks. Good gosh, that looked three inches here in the last days, but where's that, that water going? I mean, out of that thing. I'm just, I'm just speaking from a concerned, again, guy that sees this stuff day in and day out, and it's kind of like, holy cow, there's, why didn't they not address that water right now? Somebody's got to address it, because it's coming out of there, and it's going to flood that thing, so... You know, the drainage is right there on Reno, so they got to go in there and tie in it, because it's underground there, or they got to go back to the east. It's kind of like, why didn't we put the pond over the east and dump it right there and let it run down the ramp?
Well, Mr. Mayor, staff was aware of that, and the current developer of this plaid and the current owner of the property, the south of them, have been in talks. They are looking at how to convey that water south to Reno, so it won't become an issue in the future. So everybody's aware of it, all the concerned parties, and it'll be addressed.
Okay, I'll trust you on that one.
Yes, sir.
All right, Fred.
Just passing down the road. You know, I just watch these projects and stuff that go on, and sometimes it sound like that's, that's, you know, I hope that didn't go on. It doesn't work, it's going to work. Because it's going to be an issue just like that one.
Yes, sir.
Who's going to address it? And my, my point about it will be real quick, is that we got to go come up with some money. We need three hundred thousand. We need a half a million dollars to fix something that started twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years ago, and we saw it coming. We saw this train wreck coming, okay? The people that should be paying for it have long come and gone.
Well, and we're, we're trying to make that happen now.
I see, and that's what we need to do, because you're got to come extract tax dollars out of all our markets and go get matching federal funds, which God knows they don't have anything at twenty-some trillion dollars. You know, we're not paying our way out of this puppy, so, thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
And just on the few, the future ordinance that we've talked about, that's been talked about here and there over the past couple of months, Patrick and his staff, our staff have been, have been working on a draft. I think we have a draft that we need to, to sit down and, and, and talk through some of the issues that, that address these things. But I expect it to be very controversial as it goes through, to say the least, because...
Well, a whole lot controversial than what we're dealing with right now. With that being said, we, chair would entertain a motion.
Is the owner or the engineer here on that? I, I see a guy who I think may be an engineer back there.
So the, let me get it straight. The lot south of that is a separate owner?
Yes, sir.
Question, so Billy on this development, so is this under the new criteria, so?
Okay, and my question, Derek, I, I noticed there was a bunch of work going over there just this week. It looked like some drainage stuff getting fixed or something, because I drive by there about five times a day.
Yes, Derek Jackson, fifty-three fifty South Western Avenue, Suite Two Twenty-two, Oklahoma City. There was a slight, I guess, mishap. Part of the pond was kind of encroaching on that south property owner. He brought it to our attention before the planning commission, so the contractor's out there fixing that to make sure it doesn't encroach on him.
Okay, that was my main question, because I, I noticed y'all done a lot of work out there.
Yeah.
I know all the grass got taken away and put back.
Yeah, we're pretty much done, as you can see. I mean, everything's done. We're just waiting to submit the asphalt and everything to the city for the paving and the detention pond.
So Derek, the, the, looking at the plaid, the, it looks to me that Lot Forty-two is the common area, which I assume is going to be the detention area?
Yes, the, the initial drainage, everything kind of drained to the south anyway. There was a portion actually that drained up to the north, but that detention pond is designed to catch all the drainage to the south, and that's kind of why the detention pond is in the middle of the cul-de-sac.
And I think, I think Mr. Hawk's point is a valid point in terms of, of, where do, where would you envision the discharge off of Lot Forty-two to, to find its way? And I assume that it would end up probably going into the bar ditch along Reno?
Yes, sir. The property owner to the south hasn't shared his development with us, but he's aware that we're discharging there, and like Mr. Minifee said, that, you know, we're going to work with him, our prop, the developer and that property owner are going to work together to make sure we're not causing any flooding issues when he develops that south piece.
You'd think, I mean, I'd like to think engineering's worked all this out, but to miss and get the pond off on the wrong lots is not a real good start.
Well, that was more the contractor. The surveyor had it staked. The contractor just kind of just did his own thing. But the surveyor was on the phone with me, staking the property and had it staked before the detention pond was built, but he's out there correcting that problem.
I mean, are there details on how that water's going to get to Reno?
No, sir. Not at this time.
The, the property owner on the south property line of this addition is aware of the water, and he knows that he'll help convey it south to Reno. He has not finished his construction plans for that property yet.
But what if the property owner on Reno says he didn't want to give him an easement to allow that water? I mean, it's just going to...
Well, part of the responsibility of him developing that parcel will be to convey that water from the north to the south.
Well, I mean, like I said, I assume engineering's done their homework, and trust that we get those drawings, and is this the final stage in it?
For this part of the development, yes, sir. The commercial part, though, is just underway and under design. I can't tell you when specifically he's ready to move forward and start construction, but that process is underway.
Well, I mean, I just, depends on where the outlet is. If the outlet's right on the property line, it doesn't give you a lot of time to capture and take care of any silt and erosion and stuff before you're right on another guy's property.
You know, it's always a challenge in development, and you have this progressing in stages. So there's going to be erosion challenges, there are going to be drainage challenges, and everybody's aware of it. All the parties are, right now, aligned to, to address those issues.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicating saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. That concludes the discussion part of our agenda. We move into the new business public discussion on the Midwest City Council agenda. Anyone having anything to bring before the council? Hearing none, we're hereby adjourned. Now called order, the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We do have a consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any one item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience, wish to discuss an item, be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, indicating saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We now move into the public, new business public discussion of our agenda. Anyone having anything to bring before the trustees? Hearing none, we're hereby adjourned. Now called order, the Midwest City Municipal, or Memorial Hospital Authority Agenda. We do have several discussion items on the agenda.
First item is discussion consideration of approving the minutes of the staff briefing and regular meeting of February thirteen, twenty eighteen.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor, indicating saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Now move into the next discussion item.
This is discussion consideration of taking action on one, the following Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority Trust Board of Grantors Grant application recommendations, and they are as follows. Midwest City Fire Gas ID Analyzer for sixty-one thousand, gas monitors for fourteen thousand four hundred, triage, triage, triage.
Triage.
Kits for twelve thousand eight hundred and eight dollars and forty-four cents, and passenger, child passenger safety restraints for two thousand thirty dollars and twenty-five cents. Midwest City High School B-one technology for ninety thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty cents. Midwest City Grant Department, Dana Brown Cooper Head Start Center for forty-one hundred dollars. Midwest City Public Works Excavation Safety Response Unit for sixty-seven thousand, and Regional Trail Exercise Stations for fifteen thousand. Midwest City Police Faro Technologies for seventy-eight thousand eight one one. Midwest City Community Development Ridge Crest Entrance Sign for twenty-two hundred dollars, and Drone for five thousand. Carl Albert High School Water Bottle Filling Stations for one thousand forty dollars and twenty-one cents, and Band Booster Trailer for twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Oklahoma Earth Bike Fellowship Skip Maintenance for forty-five hundred dollars. Friends of Oklahoma History Center, Inc., Restore and Interpretive Historic C-47 for ten thousand dollars. Midwest City Senior Center Aquarium Project for two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. The Eden Clinic, Inc., Increased Medical Services, thirty thousand dollars. And Autumn House, Inc., Wireless System for twenty-six, six forty-five and fifty cents. And authorizing the distribution of the approved grant awards not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen fiscal year. I would like to, to mention that in preparing for this evening, we noted that in the Eden, the Eden Clinic application that the proposed signage was for the amount that was... the proposed signage was for, uh, the amount that was allocated was for two signs, one at their, their Norman office and one here in Midwest City. And, um, we certainly don't want to pay for a sign in Norman, so, um, uh, we would, uh, suggest that that number be modified, uh, by thirty-five hundred dollars, uh, so that the only funding would be for the sign here in Midwest City.
Mr. Mayor, I've thought about how to address some concerns I have with this item, and I realize no matter what I say or do, I'll upset some people. It's not my intent to, nor is it any effort to diminish the efforts of the board or granters, but I must respectfully disagree with some of the recommendations they've brought for us to vote. I realize like any other board or city staff, just like the process that we've gone through tonight, that, uh, they're just recommendations, and that the city council, the seven of us, make the final decision, and, and I only have one vote, as everyone else on the horseshoe do, does. I will admit, I did not necessarily agree with some of the recommendations last year, but I accepted it because of the thought process that went into some of them recommendations, and I didn't say anything. Uh, this year, I, I just can't sit back and not speak. For the past two years, there's been a grant that's been submitted that I feel like should have been awarded funds last year, and this year, the recommendation is for it not to receive funds again. The grant is the Midwest City High School, the Vietnam Memorial. This project has received significant positive press, both on the local television stations and in the newspapers, and it's being, and it's being planned to honor hundreds of young graduates of Midwest City High School that joined the military for the Vietnam War. Twenty-two of those bombers were killed in action. I was in the military during Vietnam, and I can remember vividly how soldiers returning from Vietnam. Were never honored, and many of them have been buried and forgotten. I can remember when I returned from Thailand after my tour there, and we were told not to leave Travis Air Force Base without changing into civilian clothes because of the disrespect that we would receive. This project is a huge opportunity for the city of Midwest City to continue on with the reputation that we have long nurtured, that we are a military-friendly town and are proud of our history with the military. I've read some of the comments by the board, granters, from this year and last year, and they mentioned that we already have a veterans memorial at the park. We do, in Midwest City, through this same grant process, award us a significant amount of funds to build that. This project is completely different. This is not only to honor the hundreds who served and attended the high school. It will honor the twenty-two young soldiers who gave their lives. So that we can have this discussion like we're having tonight, but it's also an effort to provide a teaching opportunity for every teacher at Midwest City High School. It will also provide the current and future students of the high school and the citizens of Midwest City a place where they can sit and reflect. Hundreds of students will pass by this every day as they arrive and leave the school. Realistically, more people will see this memorial than the one at the park. This is an excellent opportunity for the city of Midwest City to work hand-in-hand with Midwest City High Museum, to bring a museum that every single person who has ever lived in Midwest City or attended Midwest City High School can be proud of. In my opinion, this would be a great addition to our community. If we were basing the awarding of funding strictly on what the city of Midwest City has advertised on their website in the grant application paperwork, there is no grant anymore deserving. It states, it states in part on the internet and on, on the paperwork, improvement to or enhancement of property with the expected useful life of greater than twenty years. This project will certainly meet that standard. As with any issue as this, we'll have to make some concessions on where the money would need to come from, come from, in lieu of it. It would be my recommendation that we not fund the grant recommendations to Midwest City High for ninety thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty cents, and to Carl Albert for twenty-three thousand five hundred and forty dollars, which combined of a hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and four dollars and eighty-one cents. This recommendation in no way should be taken that I don't support the school system, because I do. I supported and voted in the bond issue last October that awarded the Middel Schools over a hundred and thirty-one million dollars. Included in that bond issue are dedicated funds for both computers and equipment and uniforms for bands. There are videos still up on the internet today, because I watched them again, that were used in the campaign by the school system where Dr. Cobb states this. I have also talked to teachers and other staff members in the school system before I made any decision on this. I was told by both groups that needs assessments were done at every public school prior to the bond being presented to the public on what each school needed. I am confident the superintendent and his staff will follow what they said, the money will go for, and these projects that have been submitted to the grant would have been, or will be covered. Under different circumstances, I may not feel comfortable, may not feel as comfortable recommending these funds be changed to the memorial project, but with the school bond passing and the assurances from the superintendent made as far as dedicated funding, I'm confident the school would not be adversely affected by our action. Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Could you pull it down and show the, uh, go back?
There's several members of the audience that signed up to, uh, come and speak to the council, would you come forward, please? On this particular issue?
Thank you, I'm Bob Osman, twenty-one oh one Pearson Drive, Midwest City. Been a resident of Midwest City since nineteen fifty-one, when my parents moved here. At that time, we were in the northern part of Midwest City, over by Country Estates, that was the north end of Midwest City. I'm retired from the city. I'm currently the chairman of the Midwest City High School Vietnam Memorial. I appreciate, first of all, what Mr. Burns, you're my councilman, I couldn't be more proud of you tonight. I'd like to ask, part of my committee came here tonight to support me and, and the rest of our project here. These people have put in a lot of hard work on this project over the last four years. I'd like to have my committee, or ones that could make it tonight, stand. Please stand. All of these people are graduates of Midwest City High School from the sixties to the seventies. They are a small portion of the, uh, group that is behind this project. We are contacting people from as early as nineteen forty-seven, uh, and as late as this year. Everyone that I have spoke to is in favor of this project. I won't bore you with the details, I think every one of you have read or had the opportunity to read my grant application, both last year, and then when things changed, I did it again this year. But I would like to address a few of the comments, I'm not gonna stay up here all night, I promise you. I'm just want to address a few of the comments that the committee made. And, and I'm not gonna address them specifically, but...
Or, yes, you can, you can sit down.
The, uh, this memorial started back at my fiftieth class reunion back in twenty-fourteen. And, uh, we recognized, in my class, we had five hundred and twenty-five graduates. And of those, approximately a hundred of them were veterans. About thirty-five of them were Vietnam veterans. Four of my classmates did not return from Vietnam. Some of my other classmates and some of these other classmates, they lost their friends, people we grew up with from grade school on up. We lost them when they were eighteen, twenty years old, the average age of those twenty-two students that were killed over there, those heroes of ours, was twenty-point-five years of age. We have expanded, uh, we have, we started out to raise up these bomber heroes and put them on a wall of honor at Midwest City High School on the campus, the same campus that they walked the halls in. So that we and the students there at Midwest City High School could walk those same halls as free people today. You know, I'm a military veteran, a lot of these people are, some of them are not, but we all feel that this is a worthwhile cause. We understand that there are other veterans memorials around the state and here in Midwest City. That's perfectly fine, those are generic veterans memorials for the most part, where ours is specifically for bombers that, that went to school here in Midwest City that gave their life. And this is going to be on the campus of the school that they love to, to attend. I, I've got a couple of other people that would like to speak, I'm not gonna stand up here and take their time. I wanna thank you for reconsidering and considering our grant. I sure hope that you vote in favor of it, I appreciate your support.
Bob, before you sit down, I've got a question, kind of a clarification. You have twenty-two names on the back of your shirt of young men who died in Vietnam, and you have three names on the back of your shirt, two men who were killed in the Murrah bombing that graduated from Midwest City, and one gentleman who graduated from Midwest City and was killed in Desert Storm One, am I correct?
That's correct, partially correct. Uh, two, two students that went to Midwest City High School were killed in the Oklahoma City Murrah bombing. And I, when I was a police officer here at Midwest City, we lost a police officer there. Not, she wasn't killed, but she was on the ninth floor when the building blew up, and she worked for me, I had to sign her down there to the DEA Task Force, so, you know, I, I got a great appreciation for that, too. But we, we recognize that two people from Midwest City High School were killed in the Oklahoma City bombing, and then so far, we have identified one person, Lance Chase. He was killed in the, uh, in Operation Iraqi Freedom. And, uh, we are in, we started out originally with these twenty-two Vietnam graduates, but we have learned of these others that were killed, so we expanded our project from just a wall to a whole bomber plaza area now. And we have put up future expansion where we'll recognize these two that were killed in the bomber, uh, the Murrah bombing in Oklahoma City, and the one that we've identified so far that was killed in Iraq. Those are bombers that need to, uh, have their place on, in our wall, too, or in our plaza area.
And you'll have place for expansion, if heaven forbid we lose more-
Future expansion, it's designed that way, so that in the future, there won't be this big amount of money have to be raised to recognize them, that they'll just have to buy a plaque and put it there, there'll be a place already for it.
So I'm gonna, if, if you can, before your others two speak. Bob brought me a couple of challenge coins about four months ago. Fifteen dollars, I bought one or two. And I said, Bob, I'll take a few others, I've got some clients to come in occasionally. Those sold pretty quick. And then I put on social media, I've got these available, this is the cause. You never can tell what social media, and usually it's a negative. I had people coming into my office that had, had never been into my office. I had three people who wanted to talk to me and thank me, which I don't deserve any thanks, but for getting the word out and for putting these available because it has such meaning. One of the gentlemen drove in from, um, Tri-City area, Minko, who graduated from Midwest City High School. And it's, I probably think we sold thirty of those coins.
Yeah, thirty or forty just out of your office.
And, and I'm not, I'm not saying this, look at me, I did a good job, I'm saying this, I was amazed at the number of people that were impacted from different parts of the country, that weren't even Midwest City graduates, said, look, I, I was a Vietnam War veteran, I know you, but I collect coins, I'd like one of these also. So they've made it farther than the metro area. So that's... It, it left an impact on me, and it's something that I support as well.
Well, I, I put in our, uh, grant, and I feel that this memorial, whenever it's completed and dedicated, that will draw people from all over the country to come to Midwest City High School to see our memorial and to pay tribute to our heroes. They'll be coming in from all over the country, I guarantee you. People will see it every day, the students will see it, it's an educational tool to make these students of today understand that they get to walk those halls free, you know, some people don't, but we do here. And it's because of those ones out there in that memorial that give them that opportunity. So it'll be an educational piece, it'll be around forever, I hope.
Bob, uh-
I've got at least two, I'd like to bring up, uh-
I would like to interject something.
Yes, sir.
Not.
No more.
I called him captain a long time. Uh, Councilman Burns, I concur with everything you said. Ladies and gentlemen, I've got skin in the game. I'm a thirty-one-year veteran, United States Air Force, I'm deployed all over the world. Now I've got a young son, who's a United States Marine.
Thank you.
And, uh, although he's a Titan, I couldn't help that, I'm sorry. I'm a bomber, but, I'm in full support of this, and have been from the beginning, and you know that.
Yes, sir.
And, um, I just hope the Titans take the same, I hope, I pray that we don't lose another young Midwest Cityan-
That's our prayer also, sir.
-in, uh, in a time of war. But I hope that somebody takes the same initiative, and I'm sure they will at Carl Albert, if in fact that comes about. The Vietnam War was an unappreciated war, and I grew up during that time, and I hated it, because I come from a military family. I, I saw how soldiers were treated. These young men, even if they'd have come home alive, they wouldn't have been respected like they should have, like they are now. I too think that this is a small prize for us to, uh, erect or help erect a memorial, a memorial to these young men who lost their lives, and, uh, and, uh, I will help out in any way I possibly can to facilitate that, so I just want you to know that.
Appreciate your support.
For those of you who want to else, want to address the council on this particular issue, please-
There's a couple, and I'd like to bring Gail Guffey.
And, of course, you leave.
Mr. Mayor, before, hold up, Mr. Mayor, before we get cut off, we also need to recognize Ms. Allen is a veteran also, overseas.
I'm a Desert Storm veteran.
Thank you very much.
And I, you know, I have a compassion for what everyone has said, because I have heard about the Vietnam, uh, young men not being recognized, and they felt so degraded. I think it's great, and, but you mentioned it, one of you, about the Titans, uh, Carl Albert, what if they want to do the same thing? And I was thinking, what if it would be something great for them to recognize, you know, soldiers from, uh, their particular school? But I do think this is something great that's been, uh, that you have initiated, and to show the recognition, because I can say this- because I can say this, that they served, and they served well, they gave their lives.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would like to give all of you a hand to.
Thank you very much.
My name is Gail Guffey Wallace. The reason I use my maiden name is because my baby brother was one of the twenty-two fallen heroes. This is my Gold Star Sister pin. I buried my parents with their Gold Star Parent Pin. What I want to tell you about my little brother that graduated from Midwest City High School is that he was in college, and I still say Central State, I know at U C O, but I'm as old as Midwest City is, and I've lived here that long. He was in college, he had a B average, and he was a sole surviving son. The president at the time said, "We've got enough draftees, stay in school." But my dear sweet brother come home on Christmas break. My mother and I cooked a large meal. I was married, I had a daughter, five and one, three. And after we cleared the table, it was a warm December day, and my two little girls said, "Mama, can we go out in the backyard and play?" And I said, "Certainly." So as mother and I cleared the table, my brother said, "Wait, I have something to tell you, and I've already done it." And what he proceeded to tell my mother, my father, and myself, "I've joined the United States Army, I leave in two weeks to go to boot camp. After that, I will go to A I T school, and after that, I'll go to Fort Benning, Georgia, and go to jump school, and I'll be part of the Hundred and First Airborne, and I know after that, I'll be sent to Vietnam." My father jumped up and shook his hand, my mother began to cry, and he consoled her and patted her and loved her. And all I said to my brother was, "Why?" He said, "You see those two little girls in the backyard, my two little nieces? I believe with all my heart that you keep that war on the other side of the sea, that they'll grow up in a free America." And both those little girls graduated from Midwest City High School. My first child, twenty years to the day after I graduated in nineteen sixty-one, my second child in nineteen eighty-five. I love Midwest City, I was born, I was raised here. Thank you for your time, for your consideration, and yeah, I married a Titan. It's okay, I'm gonna get his brick because he's United States Navy and served in Vietnam. I love y'all for listening, and thank you at the bottom of my heart.
I'm sorry for your loss, and thank you for being here and sharing.
I'm Gary Avery, thirty-four, old two, Bella Vista. I've been here quite a while. My parents kidnapped me from Temple, Oklahoma, when I was six weeks old, and brought me to a town called Midwest City, and I've been here ever since. That was over seventy-two years ago. My father was a builder, and he was in the Navy, and he served proudly in World War II. His brother served proudly for thirty-two years in the Navy, World War II. My wife's father, Samuel Land, didn't make it back from World War II. He died with about three months left to serve before the war ended. And I went to Fort Gibson, saw all those young men laying out there in the rolling hills, and all their tombstones. And it was really hard to understand the sacrifice those boys had gone through. I stand here today with the honor and, and the thankfulness that we had twenty-two bombers go and give it all. You know, they were our bombers, but they're America's heroes. We're all in this room with the privileges we have because of them. It's gonna be a beautiful monument, Bob brought it up. We have a gentleman graduated in our class named Tony Callaway, and he's been our architect. He did a little project called the Kennedy Book Depository in Dallas, Texas. It's a beautiful, beautiful monument. It's gonna be all black granite, just like the one in, in Washington, D.C., with their pictures and their name and their class and how they died and their rank, and it's all for them, not us. And it's gonna be, like you said, it's gonna be something we can expand on. We could have other people there, and in the bricks that we're gonna lay with your names and mine and other people, I'm buying one for my father. I'm buying one for his brother. I'm buying one for my wife's dad. I'm buying all these bricks to say thank you. One of our classmates sent in five hundred dollars the other day for, to buy some bricks, and he put on there each one of the four nineteen sixty-four bombers that passed away and said, "This is for them," and he basically said, "Thank you," by putting his name on it, for what they had done for him. And he's in Georgia now, he's a representative there in the State Senate. You know, don't get me wrong in my comparison here, but Jesus, he didn't want to die, and neither did these boys. But they went and they served, and they gave us freedom. Jesus gave us eternal life, accepting Him. So I ask you to honor these boys that died for us, all twenty-two of them, and the ones at the Murray Building, and the world, ones in the Iraqi campaign. I ask you to not let them down because when we had our class reunion night, almost fifty-four years ago, for our fiftieth class reunion, we stood all of the, the boys that had been in the service up, and there was maybe a hundred, hundred and fifty, I don't know how many exactly, but you know, they came to us afterwards, we had a big band playing, a public speaker and everything. It was dedicated to those veterans. But they came up to us and said, "You know, it's the first time anybody said thank you to us. We need to say thank you, twenty-two."
Thank you, sir.
I don't have quite as much to say as they did, probably don't need to say anymore. Also, my drainage problem isn't, is fixed. We moved to Midwest City in nineteen fifty-seven. Our parents were not military people, but almost everybody that I knew, their parents were in the military, they were civil, civilian workers at Tinker. My, my dad was in insurance business, and that drew him there to Midwest City. We went to Jarman Junior High, Midwest City High School, and then we've got the Monrooney Thunderbirds. So our community, you know, they stand, stand up and fight, they don't, they don't, they even run. We had many that came, that went to, went to Vietnam and didn't come back, but we've had some that come back, and they're still suffering for that. That, that's something that we can't do much about, but we do support them. Bob came by my office, and he showed me his, his brochure, and I went through that, and I said, "Hey, I know just a great guy for you on this, Keith Simpson can help you on this." And he called Keith, but he called me too, so I didn't, I didn't get out. But we talked, talked about Tony Callaway. My brother-in-law works in commercial real estate in, in Dallas, and he knows Tony well, and, and he's already bragged about some of the projects he's had in, in Dallas. In New Orleans, he, they worked there, and you know how picky they are about their, what their, what their requirements are for, to build and, and to, and to keep something going. The, the project will honor Vietnam vets, just vets of any, vets of any age. Major Bells from Tinker, I heard him speak this week. He was talking about thirty-six thousand people on the base. One of the big things that he thinks is that Tinker has to go for it is the way that his base is treated by the, by the community of Midwest City. This, this will honor our vets, it'll honor the history of Midwest City. They'll learn about world history here. Future students will, will know, know what our school was about. This is gonna be attractive for our school and for our town, it will attract alumni. Our, our Midwest City High School people, it's, it's a strange place. You know, you hear once a bomber, always a bomber, and growing up here, you know, you have good friends, you have friends, and you have friends that you just kinda know, but they always, you know, were there to help you out. And that's what we're hoping to do here.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Could you hold on just one minute? Ladies and gentlemen, we're in a, we're in a predicament. Government usually is in a predicament. We have a very wealth, well-worth project that, for whatever reason, didn't get funded through a grant process that we have in place. Sherry Beard is the chairman of the, of the Board of Grantors, and they worked very diligently through this process, and Ms. Beard, you've heard the comments, and this is a, an emotional issue. So what we've been moving around up here doing is trying to make your government work. So we have come up with a solution that we're not gonna take away from the Board of Grantors' work, but we are going to come back next council meeting with funding for your project. And I can't tell you exactly how much right now, but it will be significant. And again, Ms. Beard, we don't want to take away from the hard work that you, we know the hard work that you all put into this, but again, this is, as you can see, an extremely emotional issue, and although we do have a veterans memorial in place, it's, as Mr. Osman put it, it's a generic, and it covers all the, all the services and not generic to any one conflict. But having grown up in Midwest City during the Vietnam conflict and being so closely tied, I'm fifth-generation military myself, being closely tied to the military, I saw how our folks were treated when they came back. Then I went into the military, and when Bob came with this project, I, I thought, "Man, that's great." And we do need to honor these young men that did not come back, that sacrificed a hundred percent. Ladies and gentlemen, we've lost three million people, three million souls over the course of the history of, of the United States, giving it all to, to support what we're doing right here in this chamber tonight. And, and there's young men and women deployed all over the world right now defending what we're doing right here in this chamber tonight. One percent, one percent of our total population serves in the United States military. So any chance that we get to honor that service, I think we need to take advantage of, and that's exactly what the city of Midwest City plans to do. And I assure you, next council meeting, we're gonna come back with the funding. Again, I can't tell you how much right now, we'll have to work out the wickets, but that's what you get, pay, you pay us to do, is work out the wickets. And I do appreciate everybody's attention to this, and, and Ms. Beard, thank you for being here. Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
I'm not the enemy. First of all, thank you for having me. I do want to say, I, I totally agree with everything y'all have said, I am an Army brat. My father was twenty-one years, Hundred and First Airborne, so I get it. I totally support it. But on behalf of the board, I feel like I need to say, we work very diligently to make what money we have go as far in this community as it can go. And we felt like, because this project was so special and so supported, that you all would come up with funds in other ways, that some of these other areas that were, the grants that were submitted, they have no other resources. And, and so in our job, we were just trying to make sure that we can, we can help as many people as possible, and it, and I wish that we had the million and a half of all the grants that were requested, but we just didn't have it. So, you know, just, just have mercy on us that we try to do the best we can.
And I.
I've got a couple of questions for Sherry about.
Be nice.
I, I've known you for too long to be mean. I, I, looking at the minutes, I don't understand the scoring mechanism that you guys are trying to change, or do you even have the authority to change the name of the program?
I think Guy needs to address that, because.
Yes, they do have the, the authority to, to modify the scoring, the scoring.
So, but an A and a B both get the same points?
You're gonna have to, have to give me a second to get to.
I would have loved that in high school, that's the only reason I'm, I'm bringing this up. I would have loved for an A and a B to have gotten me the same exact.
As a matter of fact, we discussed that even though we had made changes in the scoring, that we still want to make more changes because we felt like that it really wasn't a good reflection of how some of the votes needed to be.
I say you guys just do the Olympics, and you, you grade zero through a hundred, and you take out the two outliers, the lowest and the highest, and you average the rest. Because if you're given an A and a B, ten points.
You have to understand.
And a C and a D, fifteen points.
But remember, Sean, this is, we're looking strictly at paper, that's all we're looking at. Then we come together, and then we discuss, and so that can have a big reflection on how the vote is finally cast.
I, I, and I get that, but I'm still looking at an A and a B or the equivalent percentage points, and C and D are as well.
Okay, maybe it'll help you if you, if you think of it as this is a guideline. When we come in there, it's just a guideline for us to start with.
I can say as a guideline, growing up, a C would not get me grounded, but a D would get me grounded. And given a D the exact same points as a C, doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Are you referring to this, this, right here?
I'm referring to discussion and considerization. After much discussion, Rose made a motion to change the point values of the evaluation format as follows. A equals ten, B equals ten, C equals fifteen, D equals fifteen, F equals forty, seconded by Otto, voting I, was everybody, motion carried. So I don't understand how an A and a B are the same points, a C and a D are the same points, because a D would have gotten me in trouble.
I, I don't think you're following how the actual evaluation is done. It's bullet points, it's, Guy, do you, are you?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll try, try my best. So when we revisited this last year, we tried to, to reshape how the evaluation process goes on. And so we ended up coming up with six criteria, so to speak. A is quality of the proposed project. B is demonstrated need for the proposed project. C is appropriateness of budget. D is management capacity. E is program evaluation, and F is overall impact of the Midwest City community.
So one through five makes more sense because that looks like a grading scale of A through F.
Well.
That has nothing to do with it, it's just.
That's why I was reading, I was like, "How does this even work?"
Well, we do have to remember.
So, so what the board did after they went through this exercise this year, they felt like, "We want to give more, more priority to another area."
But you can see how I'm reading that.
But you're not on the committee. But you're not on the committee.
I used to be on the committee, and it was the favorite thing I've ever done in the city, including sitting here tonight.
And, and we don't pay them, so they are voluntary. And the thing is, we-
But we still have oversight, and we still have to understand what they're doing.
We have oversight, but we have to be mindful that they come and try to work out-
Christine, I'm very mindful. I've known, I've known Sherry my entire life. I'm asking questions. I'm asking questions.
Work out how they can delegate four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'm asking questions.
And that's, and that's why we have those-
I don't interrupt you when you're asking them.
I know you don't, but we- That's why we're having, letting you have those discussions. Because we come in after the evaluations and then we discuss, because some people have some insight that not everybody on the board might have. And so those discussions are very pertinent on the final outcome of the recommendations.
That makes more sense.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for the work you do.
Thank you, Ms. Beard.
I, I got one, I mean, and it goes back to Pat's comment, not that the schools, but they do get, you know, I mean, they, they, a lot of money was passed, and you mentioned that y'all try to help some of the organizations that can't help themselves, but how does this, not, you know, how, how do the schools come back in the picture when they haven't had it? And we passed a lot of, you know?
Well, and that's gonna be, that's gonna be a discussion that this council is gonna have to engage in. We modified the, the trust indenture last year to, to pull in some issues that we had with last year's deal, and this is gonna be something that we're gonna have to sit down and take a look at.
But we don't have to fund issues if we don't want to.
No, you're absolutely correct.
And I agree with Pat, and I agree with Jeff, that there's probably better use for that money than this, not, the schools do an incredible job. The computers don't quite hit the level of where they need to, because they don't last for twenty years.
No, they don't.
The bond issue was covering computers for all schools. It was also covering band and everything else. We are paying for stuff that a hundred and thirty-one million dollar bond was just passed to pay for.
Well, there's several other areas that we give grants to that-
I'm not talking about those.
The same argument can be made.
But they haven't had a hundred and thirty-one million dollar grant that was just passed.
I, I get it, but this is a discussion that we're gonna have to have.
It's a discussion that we can have right now if we're gonna discuss funding things.
I had one thing. The bond issue didn't pass, the grants were already submitted, and we were already reviewing them before that bond issue.
So then there's a good chance these have already been funded. And, I know, these came, but these came to them in September, right? That's when the bond applications first came out.
November. They would've been in November.
First of November.
My, my- I'd like to table this whole thing so we can get a better answer to make sure, because I don't really wanna fund things. Give me a second, Matt. I'm one vote. I don't really wanna fund things that were just funded by a hundred and thirty-one million dollar bond issue, and I don't wanna specifically fund computers, not that they're not important, but they have a five-year, three-to-five-year life expectancy, and that's way outside what the guidelines of our-
Not at Midwest City High School, they don't, and that is part of the problem, honestly. I, you know, and again, this is why they're already behind on the rollout. That's a fact, okay?
Who's behind the rollout?
Midwest City High School is with regard to where they're at on updating textbooks, computers, the whole, I mean, the whole night. We can go through this and we can pick apart, as Mike just said, other, what's the word I'm looking for? Proposed distributions that are in here that can, can come down as a routine cause that should be borne out by other funds, not a community development true grant, in my mind, in my opinion. Same thing, Sean, I'm only one vote, okay?
And again, we, we do have a solution. We are gonna table this, or the, the motion is going to be made to table this, and we're gonna come back with further discussion on it. But again, I'll get back to my main point, is that we reviewed these procedures last year and we came back with changes. We're gonna have to do it again, and we're gonna have to have some hard discussions going forward, if we're gonna continue this grant program.
And, and there are some things-
That does not mean that we have to fund things the way they sit, just because we need to have hard discussions.
I get it, but we do need to move forward, and we're not gonna solve it this evening.
I understand.
So is it gonna be tabled?
Only if somebody makes that motion.
Move to table. Move to continue, since somebody didn't like table last time.
No. Two different ideas. You move to table this particular discussion item?
Yes, I do. To, to bring it back at the next meeting is what I want to do.
Okay.
Well, and, and as, as I mentioned to the mayor, if this item is continued or tabled, it will come back this way. But I think that, I think that, that the, my, my instructions here are gonna be to bring a second agenda item back that will address the funding of this memorial.
That's a better step. I, I move to table this agenda item with a request that an addendum be added that addresses the additional funding from discretionary funds.
Yeah, it won't be an addendum. It'll just be a separate agenda item, because I, I think the best way to, the best way to do this is to keep these separate.
Do you want me to make these two separate motions then, or does it matter?
I don't, I don't, it, it doesn't-
Tableing this doesn't prevent them from bringing a separate agenda item?
Yeah, that's, that's what we're gonna do. I, I would just act on this, and I'll bring, we'll bring back another agenda item that will facilitate another action on the part of the trust.
Okay, I do have a gentleman, I'm sorry, sir, at the podium, before we, before we move forward.
All right. Hello, good evening. I'm Richard Stevens, Jr. I'm resident Midwest City, eighty, ninety-four oh four Orchard Boulevard, and I came to speak on behalf of the Carl Albert High School Band Booster's request for trailers for the band. And I see in the grant proposal that we, it was recommended if we get twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. That's great. The only reason I was speaking up is that Mr. Byrne appeared to put the, our proposal at jeopardy. In, in other words, we, we might not get the funding if-
Nothing's in jeopardy as it stands right now, sir. That's why we're moving forward with this. We're gonna table this issue, bring it back in the next council meeting with an additional item to address the other issues that were brought up this evening.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, 'cause this is the second year we requested this. We got hundreds of band parents who are fundraising-
Yes, yes, sir.
And, and the band represents Midwest City, and we sure hope that we're part of that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Osman?
What is?
No, Carl Albert.
I just go, I'd like to personally introduce one member of our committee, David Miles, if you would, stand up. David Miles is a Vietnam veteran, and he came home, but he came home with two Purple Hearts, you know, three Purple Hearts, I'm sorry. And I, I just feel like he ought to be recognized by you all.
Okay, Ms. Zead, you can go ahead with your motion.
Can I, can I have just a second, though, really quickly?
Yes, ma'am.
The bricks, ultimately, do you want to limit the purchase of the bricks if you were a bomber? Or can you give those in dedication to anyone? Because the reason why I ask is, my father served in Korea. I have a daughter who is a freshman at Midwest City High School, and so I very much, I have talked with Pat at length, I own a challenge coin, I would very much like to buy a brick.
Certainly can.
But again, he's, he was not a bomber, so.
Certainly can. My, my, my dad, I'm getting one for him. Like Gary Avery said, he's getting some for his family members. But we, underneath the Wall of Honor, that area will be designated, kinda like this is the Wall of Honor here, and this area here will be for bricks for veterans of any war. They don't have to be bombers. They can be anybody that's a friend of the bomber, and those are, that's, that's where those bricks will go. On the other side, the south side of the sidewalk, there'll be an area that's split with flagpoles, and those two areas there are where names like your names around the horseshoe here will go for the two people that were killed in Oklahoma City in the Iraqi conflict, Iraqi war. Those names will go there, and below those will be bricks for classmates or friends of bombers, could be businesses or whoever, but they'll be there. And the classes, excuse, the classes will be organized like from the forties, the fifties, the sixties, the seventies, around that area there, so that when you go up there, you'll be able to find your brick fairly quick, and your classmates will be right there by you. So we're wanting to sell bricks. That's the way we're helping to fund this project. You know, we, we can't rely on this grant. I ask for anything, up to and including the total purchase price. This is, we're a committee of the Midwest City High School Museum, Inc. We're a five-oh-one-C-three organization, and any money that hopefully we have left over, you know, hopefully we can fund this project, and then what we plan on doing with any money in the future that comes in would be to go to the museum, to maintain it, digitize it, computerize it, so that you can sit here and go online and see the history of Midwest City. And that's what we plan on doing as a future project. So we, again, I wanna thank you for your consideration on our project. Like I said, this is the second year in a row I've put it in. I've been denied twice. I just feel like I'm a lousy grant writer, so, you know, I-
I think Matt told you you weren't denied a second.
Yes. I, I, well, recommended, recommended, so. Thank you, counsel. And again, Mr. Burns, I appreciate very much what you said. Thanks, Sean, for your support. Thank you for your support. I appreciate it around the horn, everybody. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Zead, you wanna proceed?
Mr. Mayor, so at this time, I would move to table this agenda item, and then, as discussed, the additional agenda item will be separate, but move to table this time.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any capable saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Item's tabled. Next discussion item.
Third item is discussion consideration of action to reallocate assets, change fund managers, or make changes in the statement of investment policy guidelines and objectives. No action is necessary on this agenda item.
Ladies and gentlemen, we now move into the public discussion, new business of our agenda. Anyone having anything to bring before the Board of Trustees? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. I call to order the Midwest City Special Economic Development Authority. We do have a consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so we can vote on all the items in one vote. Any issue with any one of the items will be pulled and heard in regular order, either from the count, Board of Trustees or the, the audience. Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
You had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Any capable saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. We now move into the public, new business public discussion of the Economic Development Authority. Anyone having anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.